Okay, I call this meeting to order at 6:40 PM. We start with public input. We have no public, so we'll move on. Student report, we have no student, so we'll move on. The only thing I'll say, the student report, though, is SpongeBob the Musical starts this weekend, so everybody go out and see it.
I have a student report, but I can give it later.
You have a student report? Okay.
Yeah.
I guess you are, you're always a student.
Yeah, why don't we do it out of order?
Yeah, we'll do that later on. Okay, so we'll go on and we're gonna jump straight to the end of the agenda first for overnight trip requests. We have a band chorus competition trip, so Mr. Owens and characters.
Just from here, is this fine?
Yeah, that's fine.
Sweet, so, yeah, I'm here with my three, the three drum majors of the band. This is Nate Burt, Isabel Kim, and Rafi Toby. And I speak on behalf of Mrs. Kane and her chorus members who are mostly currently in rehearsal right now for SpongeBob, which opens this weekend, like you said. And we are requesting a trip for a festival called Music in the Parks down in Orlando from May 2nd to May 5th. It is a both choral and concert band competition that we have done previously but locally. Out in Six Flags, we do the same type of festival, but we looked to do an expanded trip this year. And every four years, we go to Disney, and that's our big trip. And we compete down there, but this, we tried to do a slightly larger trip than just a local trip, but without missing any more schools. So, we would leave on the evening of May 2nd, or the afternoon shortly after school, which is a Thursday, and we would miss Friday, which is what we normally miss when we go and compete locally. And then we would come back Sunday afternoon, so there would be no other school time missed. Why we want to go down to that area and compete as opposed to maybe some other places is that there are a lot of great local to that Florida area adjudicators that would be able to see us, people that we haven't seen when we go out up here. Up here, where we typically see adjudicators from UMass or Worcester, and people who teach college and whatnot, but we'd have a large variety of more adjudicators that we could see down there. We perform either on Friday or Saturday, and then we get feedback, and there's an award ceremony in the park on, I think, on Saturday when the festival is over that weekend. We're still working with Bob Rogers Travel on accommodations and pricing and all that stuff. We have a general outline of what the schedule will look like, but things are still in flux based on when flights come out, and I was just, I got emailed today that they're working on a good lead on a hotel for us, but it'll be on property down there and other things to do. We're looking to try to keep the price down as much as possible, obviously out-of-state travel and getting flight and hotel and working with the travel company brings it up a little bit. We're hoping for, you know, in the 1,200-ish range. If we can, might be a little bit more, a little bit less, but we don't know numbers completely yet. But the moment we find that out, we'll get that out to the parents and kids. We're looking at up to 90 kids would be going, the 60-something that are in band, and the 30, around 30 that are in chorus, we share a couple. It is a completely voluntary trip, so we are not requiring anybody to go, but anybody who would like to go but has financial difficulties, we will work around that. We've got big sales set up, we've got restaurant fundraisers set up, and continue to work with music boosters and whatnot to make that more accessible to everybody as we move forward. But like I said, it's something that we've done before. These guys all experienced the Disney trip a couple of years ago. They've experienced other concert band festivals, they know the value of getting the adjudication from the local level, but especially now being able to go down and get some people, especially in that area where music is even a little bit more prominent than up here in some cases. So, getting college professors from down there, could be University of Florida, could be Florida State, could be Alabama, anywhere around there that come down and adjudicate us, people we haven't seen before and get a different voice and information to make our kids better. And we have a little bit of fun while we do it. But that's the plan, and hopefully it works out.
Excellent, questions?
So, is this adding in, you said you do Disney every five years?
Four.
Four, so is this gonna be in addition, is this gonna?
Yeah, so we'd be looking, so if I look at my freshman this year, it would be not necessarily universal every year to do this festival, but some larger, some middle-of-the-ground festival, and then Six Flags next year with the same Music in the Parks festival, then Disney their junior year, and then another Music in the Parks local competition. We compete every May, no matter what, just to get the kids out and compete. And around here, most of the concert band and choral competitions are also associated with theme parks. So, you go perform in the morning, go to the park, and then you get, I have an award ceremony at the end of the day as well. But we get tapes, we get feedback, they get written commentary and verbal commentary to us. And it's great.
Yeah, it's Universal Studios, then?
Yeah, this one would be universal, yep.
And in terms of who's going, so it's the high school band?
High school band, high school chorus.
High school chorus, not notorious, it's anybody in high school?
Yeah, we're limiting this one to strictly in, if you are in the band class or in the chorus class. The Disney trip, we open up sometimes to piano, some maskers, to some of the jazz bands, depending on what opportunities are for us down there. But this is strictly if you are in the band class or in the choral class, just like we do with Music in the Parks, we go out to Six Flags, because that's the same.
And for chaperones for 90 people?
Yep.
How many, how many chaperones?
I think it's one in 10, so I think we're looking at, if we have everybody go, it would be nine chaperones. And we'd use people associated with the musical and also those of us on music faculty.
Yep. Any other questions?
Sounds like fun, nope.
Okay.
Great, great opportunity, it's all a good trip.
Motion to approve?
I move to approve the, I don't have it in front of me, but the 2024, what'd you call it, something in the park?
Music in the parks.
Music in the park. Band and chorus trip to Music in the Park.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous, congratulations.
Fantastic.
Have fun.
Thank you very much.
Have fun.
Appreciate it.
Say hi to Harry Potter.
Oh, we will, oh, we will.
Oh, maybe I'll send my son with you.
Right?
Maybe just for Cindy's sake, just say who, just say Noel and Jeff.
Noel and Jeff.
Oh, okay.
Motion second.
Noel, motion by Noel, second by Jeff.
Everyone approve.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay.
Okay, now we go back towards the top. We have Ms. Caulfield here to talk to us about the STEM coordinator update.
So, we did have a change in the presentation tonight, so in the packet, if you click on the link, the presentation's there. Also, if you are in the meeting right now, it should be showing up on the screen. We're also having a technical difficulty in the room, where it's not up on the screen. So, I don't know if folks want to take a moment to sign into the meeting, so then you can view the screen.
I did go on the agenda, it was actually denying me access to that.
Yeah, it's not letting us sign.
But I do see it on the screen, so.
I can update that, yep, I can update that right now. So, it should be on the screen, and then there's a few hard copies here, which is great, thank you, Michelle. So, I'm very excited, if you don't mind, if I just introduce.
Thank you.
I think everyone's aware, we had, you know, our position last year that we've talked about for many, many years, about a STEM position. We were so fortunate to find someone within our school with both a science and a math background, experience with leadership, experience in higher ed, I mean, Michelle worked here for years before I was here, and then at least, I'd say about eight or 10 years since I've been here, how?
2013.
And I had no idea, some of the things that she did, you know, that I learned through our resume. And, you know, I'll say like anecdotally, I've said to Michelle, because she's telling me all the things she's doing, and I'm saying, "It's amazing how busy you can be in a position that didn't even exist last year." All those things that we are doing, that we could have been doing, that we haven't been, that she's gonna tell you about now, and super excited, but this is a great opportunity to learn what Michelle's been up to, and I'm gonna let her take it away, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Dealing. Thank you very much, Mr. Buckley, School Committee. I'm happy to be here and show you a little bit about what we've been doing in the high school and the middle school, this has been so far. The overview of the transition activities, this is just a little snapshot of what goes on routinely during the day or the week. We've been really focusing on the data analysis for the middle school and the high school math and science classes. The testing has shown us really making progress. Of course, there's still things that we need to improve upon, but we're doing a really great job so far. I do have an additional 15 teachers that I'm supervising right now, and they're all done. All their observations are done, and that does take up a lot of time, but I like to be in their classes, and I like to see what's going on. I go in there frequently, not just to, for an observation, but to give them a hand with labs or anything that they might need some help with. A lot of the time has been spent on planning our professional development to make sure it's quality professional development that they're receiving. We have been focusing on using our department meetings more efficiently and effectively, looking at curriculum, analyzing the curriculum, ensuring that we are updating and revising anything that needs to be, especially with our next-generation science standards. We are looking at NIESC in two years, so at the high school, we really want to focus and make sure that everything is buttoned up and tight. So, we have been spending some time with that. I am coaching some of our newer teachers and helping them in the classroom using best practices, making sure that they are not only using instructional techniques that are sound, but that they're able to assess the students before they even leave. So, we've been focusing on a lot of formative assessment for them so that they can determine what it is the kids know or what it is that they need to revisit in another class, which has been very, very helpful. And before the kids get to a paper pencil test or an online test, they're already receiving extra support. Our math department at the high school just, well, not just, about a month and a half ago used a diagnostic with iReady that we've been using in the elementary and middle schools. So, we're using it just right now with Algebra I. We wanted to see where the kids are from where they left in Math 8, and we've had some really great results from that. I haven't reported any of it because it was just the initial diagnostic. After the mid-year exams, we're gonna be looking at taking that diagnostic again and seeing what additional progress we've made, and then we'll look at it at the end of the year. And then we'll have a big picture between the MCAS data, the formative assessments that we've been looking at, the common assessments that we're implementing, and then the iReady data. So, we'll have a really nice focus on what it is that we're doing well and additionally what we might need some more support with.
Ask a question?
Of course.
Do you think the iReady data, I mean, I know they're all slightly different and give you different perspectives, do you think the iReady data will show anything significantly different than MCAS?
Yes and no. The standards that are reported through iReady are combined standards, so we're looking at numeracy and operations. And when we're looking at it in the MCAS data, it's very explicit, like one standard at a time. So, we're looking more at this continuum of information, and then we'll overlap that with what we're getting out of MCAS.
Right, yeah, fair enough.
I was able to attend a conference recently, which was excellent. It was one day out in Marlboro. It was sponsored by Boston College and the Mass Department of Education. We were really focusing on how the leaders in science are going to take us to that next level. Desi is focusing on something called OpenSciEd, which is just in pilots in some of the larger schools. I do have a link for it later on in one of the slides. And the two sessions that I went to, one was led by Dr. Cassandra Gonzalez and Nicole Scola, both from the Department of Ed, and then the second one was Dr. Catherine McNeil, and she was from Boston College. They were phenomenal to entirely different aspects. The first one really focused on how we can take the science curriculum and make it accessible to our students with moderate and severe disabilities, looking at the potential for using the alternate MCAS or Polio if we need to. And they even gave us samples on what meeting expectations for these students with learning differences would need to show. So, that was really, really beneficial. The second one really focused on this new observation tool, and it's more of a continuum for the teachers to look at how we're reintroducing this science curriculum focused on a phenomenon. So, it's situational-based, it's more project-based. So, they'll be given an authentic example or question that they need to follow through, and it'll really construct their knowledge about the information that they're learning. So, it's much more student-focused. If you notice on, I'll show you in a sec, the first one, the MCAS, we actually don't need this year. When I went to the conference, we weren't sure if we were gonna need it, but our students have passed, so we're great. But the second one is the one where we're focusing on this protocol, where we're looking at these key levers now. And the first one is going to be more challenging for teachers because we're realigning how they teach. So, instead of introducing a concept, and here's your notes, let's practice it in a lab, we're introducing an idea, and the kids are starting to figure out, and it'll take some time, what they need to learn, how they need to learn, what materials they need to learn from, and it's less scripted of a curriculum. So, the biggest focus here, I don't know if, I know, I'm not gonna show you, is that these, this new program, it's called Disrupting Science Education, is collaborative in nature. So, the kids are actually going to be working in science classes like they do in science labs. So, you have to depend on your colleagues, and they're gonna have to depend on their peers to create this foundational knowledge. The 5th and 8th grade MCAS will reflect this soon. So, we've actually been put on a list, hopefully they will accept our request to be part of the pilot for this. Right now, they're very large schools that have much different populations than ours, but I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we can go through it. They are gonna start releasing some data for us and releasing some questions for us so that we'll have a much better idea of the types and styles of questions that these kids are gonna be able to respond to. Okay, much more open-ended. But if you do have access to that, you can see that there's a little video down here at the bottom of what that new classroom environment looks like and how the kids are really running the class, they're running the questions. The teacher is truly a facilitator of their learning now, which in promoting STEM education, that's exactly what we need, is to give that power to the students. So, this new curriculum that we're going to be asked to start implementing in the next few years is really focusing on the how and the why of the science education rather than memorizing and things like that. It's really, it's really a great, great program. The next part I wanted to talk to you about was the focuses that we've been looking at with the different departments. I have been concentrating a lot with the high school math and science on their assessments, but their curriculum analysis as well. We've had some curriculum that has been written, and the standards haven't changed significantly, but the instructional tools have. So, we have to update that, and we have to make sure that that's reflected in our curriculum. So, that's what we've been spending some time on right now. With the focus that in two years, we have NIESC, and at the high school level, we know that the standards for NIESC, the second standard, says that we have to have a uniform format for our curriculum, and it needs to be consistent among all the disciplines, not just for math, not just for science, but for all of us. So, we're, we've adopted the UBD model, Understanding by Design, or Backwards Design, the second version that the Department of Ed offered, that template for us to use. It's a little complex, there's many, many, many sections of it, but we're really making a lot of progress going through identifying not only the standards, the essential questions, the learning objectives, the desired outcomes, everything that we need in that curriculum for hopefully somebody who's brand-new to feel comfortable if they're teaching it. All right, that's really the goal of this depth of curriculum writing. Additionally, at the middle school, we've been looking at curriculum, but we've been really focusing on their data. So, we've been doing some deep dives and unpacking what we have available right now. Math 6, 7, and 8 have been completely done. We've been looking at the transition years, so Grade 5 to Grade 6, and then Grade 8 to Grade 9 with science. There are some areas that we are starting to question, you know, and we'll get a little bit further into that with the departments, such as they focus a lot in Earth and Space in 8th grade, and then they go into 9th grade, and they have to take Biology and pass the MCAS. So, would it make more sense to adjust our scope and sequence a little bit to make sure that the kids have additional exposure prior to that depth that they need in 9th grade? So, we're having these conversations. It may, it may not be necessary to adjust the scope and sequence, but it may. But that's still in its infancy right now. Dr. O'Connell had modified the UBD curriculum template for the middle school. It's still the same sections, you still need the essential questions, the standards, the objectives. It's just a more simple-looking format, and I think it'll be easier for the middle school teachers to really bite and grab onto this, and then we can adjust as we need to, but we don't have to worry about the accreditation right now for the schools. So, as long as they have all that information in there for the teachers, we're feeling really satisfied about that. The middle school's also, like the high school, focusing on using common assessments to try to make sure that the courses are being taught equitably, and they're using a tool that the high school had just started using called Edge Elastic. And so, they're building that, it's standards-based, it's an online program. They haven't used it yet, but it's in process. So, once they have that and they've done their first trial, we're gonna meet with the high school science who are using Edge Elastic with their common assessments and try to figure out, is this working, is it not working? Do we need to make adjustments, what are we seeing, what are we not seeing, things like that? So, I feel really, really good about that because the tools will be consistent for 6 through 12, for the kids in the science classes. In the future, what are we planning on doing? Well, these are the top bullets right now that we're planning on doing. We're planning on doing a lot, but we're really gonna focus to make sure that our scope and sequence makes sense, 6 through 12. We want to make sure that it's a smooth transition year to year and that all the students feel like they're part of their learning community. So, that's a big focus for us. We're gonna look at the vertical alignment of our curriculum to make sure that from one year to the next, we are encompassing all the standards that we need to, based on the DOA, and then with the science, it's gonna be a little bit different because we are going to be transitioning to that new style of teaching, the phenomenon-based teaching. So, we're, we are excited about that, but that's gonna be a lot of work. That's gonna be a lot of work for us. Once we finish with the 6 through 12, then we'll go from K to 5 and look at that vertical alignment. They have a great program there, though. We are working on our relationships with an department. We're working on being able to collaborate more frequently. I'm trying to give them time, release time, I'll go into their classes, run their classes for them while they're communicating with each other about something, really focusing on curriculum or common assessments. I'd like to start peer-to-peer observations with them so that they can go see how their peers actually present that lesson and feel, you know, that they can openly discuss this with each other and make improvements where necessary. During our department meetings right now, we're focusing on best practices and sharing different strategies or techniques for instruction or and/or assessment. So, tomorrow, for instance, the department meeting, there's three of us. Andrea Gagnon is sharing something about big ideas. She's the math curriculum coordinator. Justin Reddington is an engineer, engineering teacher, and he is going to be sharing the soft skills that are necessary to incorporate into the engineering curriculum, which many of us in math and science classes don't necessarily pay attention to all the time. So, that's gonna be a really great idea for him. And I'm just sharing different exit tickets for the teachers to use. Ready, easy, here you go, takes you two seconds, you know, no elaborate planning, but you're still gaining information back. That's our future plans. And then some. I'm also focusing on my own educator feedback from the teachers that are in the math and science departments. And the second feed, the first feedback was just all verbal, so I didn't, it was all written responses. I got a little smarter and then put together more of a Likert scale so that I could actually quantify it. And what I really wanted to know in the introduction is there, it says, "My ultimate goal is to implement strategies and techniques to create a positive working environment for the 6 through 12 STEM faculty, ensuring that everyone feels valued, respected, and supported in their work." And that's a big-picture goal for me. I asked them to answer just a few questions, and it's not gonna let me show you, so I'll go back. What I came up with, it, I have graphs for it, but it won't let me go in. What I came up with?
Is that because you can't share it, or because?
It, the link isn't working.
Right, fair enough, fair enough.
Yeah. I can send you the.
It's all good.
What I noticed was that, the first question, it says, "When I was, when working with your peers in your departments, do you feel that your working environment is positive?" And I didn't expect this, but 100% of the faculty that did this said that yes, with either a 4 or a 5, that their working environment was positive. So, that was awesome. I said, "Do you feel that I'm helping to contribute and create a positive working environment?" 88.2% said yes, and the remaining two teachers, which was 11.8%, said they were undecided, so.
Which is fair enough at this age.
They don't know yet, yep, they don't know.
Zero, zero knows.
But zero knows.
For sure, yeah.
Zero said no, yep. The third question, "Considering a typical workday, do you believe that I value you and the work you do?" 100% of the teachers that responded said yes, which was awesome to hear. Number four, "Considering a typical workday, do you feel that I respect you and the work you do?" So, I was looking first for value and then for, to make sure that they thought I was respectful with all of our interactions, and once again, 100% said yes. So, that was really great. And then the last question I asked them, "When you leave for the day or the weekend, do you feel that I was able to support you, meaning offer clarity, advocate for their needs, et cetera?" And 94.1% responded yes, and 5.9 responded undecided. And I didn't write 0% responded no, so. But it felt pretty good to get that feedback so soon, just working with these teachers for a little over two months. So, it was good. And the last, well, second to last piece I had is our community connection. I've been focusing on the community connection, making sure that our parents and community know what STEM events are happening locally, and all the way down to Bridgewater, which wasn't so local, but it was a great event that we just had this past October. The next few that I'm gonna be publishing soon, we have in December, the first week, first full week of December, we have Computer Science Education Week that I'll be talking with Mr. Downs about. Dr. Downs just, so we're gonna meet tomorrow about it. So, we'll get that straightened. The National Puzzle Day, which is a problem-solving day, that is on January 29th. The week of February 18th to 24th is the National Engineering Week. So, I'm hoping that our engineering classes can put together a little bit of a demonstration, including the robotics classes, to either have, I can videotape, or have them put it up on their websites or something like that to make it available for others to see. March 14th, favorite day, Pi Day, we're gonna be celebrating that this year with a bunch of different activities, celebrating Pi and the circle. We are going to look at math. We are going to look at Math Awareness Month in April, and we're gonna talk about different careers that are available in the field of math, or that would use math. And right now, there's two teachers, one in middle school, one in high school, that want to really explore career awareness in STEM. So, I'm gonna ask for their help on that and sort of let them really focus on the areas that they think would be most beneficial. We have Earth Day on April twenty-second. I know the town does something really nice there, too, so hopefully we'll be able to jump into that. The one that I'm really excited about is the Girls in STEM for 2024. It's Move to You Lowell, which is much closer. I already have Anne Flaherty, who's a science teacher, excited about going there. She wants to try to see if she can get a dozen of her students and go there on the Sunday to participate in Girls in STEM. So, I was really looking forward to that. And then National Space Day is gonna be a fun day. I'm talking with somebody from NASA who is potentially gonna be able to come in. Not May seventh, but that timeframe, and talk about the different activities and careers that they do on a daily basis there, which I thought was pretty awesome. And then June eighth is World Oceans Day, and I'm gonna have Ms. Kerrigan help me with that. Because she loves environmental science.
Yeah.
All right, and then the last is the STEM Week celebration. I think you already had that from last week. What I did do was add Hood Schools' Steam Night. I added some pictures there. It was phenomenal. Mrs. Cleary does an amazing job. I think it was her sixth, sixth Steam Night at Hood. Very well-attended. Parents were having fun. Kids were having fun. We did bring in some high school students to run some of the stations for her, so that connection was really good. Of course, they were so excited because they, a lot of them were Hood School graduates, so they got to see some of their teachers while they were there, which was wonderful. But it was a really great night. Mrs. Cleary has a connection with Merrimack College, so she was able to borrow this gigantic map that they did a lot of robotics work on. So, it was fun. It was really fun. In here, Mrs. Redog, Mrs. Jolie Bear, Mr. Lane, Mr., Ms. Reddington, Mr. Ladue, and Mrs. Cleary all contributed to our STEM Week and then the Hood Schools' Steam Night. So, it was a lot of fun. If this link is working, oh, it is. You can, if you haven't yet, you can see that there's just some pictures. They told me they were doing the activities. I ran down or ran over, wherever they were, to grab some of the activities that they were doing to illustrate STEM. And you can see it's all really authentic-based, hands-on, and collaborative in nature. So, is it-
Could you do the share that screen? Just click that little- Yep, I see it.
Did it work?
Yep.
Okay, good. So, these are some of the things that-
This is great.
They were doing. Yeah, it was, it was, it was a really great week. The teachers were really excited to sponsor my STEM Week. It was great.
Good. Okay. Questions?
Do you have any questions?
Comments?
Sure.
I have a few, but-
Diana, go first.
The phenomenon-based teaching method, is that something where the goal is to be doing that a hundred percent of the time or to sort of balance out the more traditional teaching methods with some of that?
I think for us, it's gonna take some time. The ultimate goal Desi wants is for the students to be presented with a phenomenon and use what they have learned to try to figure out a solution to it. You know, we're gonna need some additional training-
Like, if you were to meet their expectation, it would be that they would be doing that a hundred percent of the time?
Yeah.
It's just that colleges might not be doing that a hundred percent of the time.
I think, yeah, I think it depends. It depends on the school. Like, Boston College, for instance, is creating all of this.
Yeah.
I work with people at Merrimack, and I work with people at Salem State, and they're creating this.
That's right.
So, those are local schools. I haven't looked elsewhere.
Yeah.
And I don't anticipate Desi is gonna ask us to do this in two years. I think this is like a ten-year process, because we're literally destroying the curriculum that we know to rework the instructional methodology. There's not, nothing about the science is actually changing. Nothing about the standards is actually changing. It's just the way we're teaching it. So, and, and for a lot of teachers, they have to release that control.
Can I, can I ask why? Like, why, why tear down? Has it been that ineffective? I'm just curious.
It's coming, it is coming from industry. Industry is definitely sponsoring a lot of the rewrites. But what we're finding is, excuse me, especially in the other populations, not necessarily our school, the, the students aren't gaining that access. They, they aren't understanding how to question what they're learning or even what they should be questioning, or how to create their own knowledge from what they're learning. So, if, the thought is if we back up and reintroduce these additional instructional techniques and strategies that the students are gonna start taking control and asking questions. And once they start asking those questions and they start formulating and constructing their own knowledge, we're gonna move significantly faster into depth of knowledge. That's, that's the force.
And I just, again, was curious. Does that, because when you think of the different learning styles, different kids have, different people have, what, I wonder how this, this new framework works with people who maybe thrive on the more traditional sort of form of learning, right? Like, may, like, does this, are we gonna lose anybody in switching over into the way things are done?
Not the way it's been presented to me. Not from what I've seen from the pilot studies so far. It's still, what I've seen is a lot of the teachers are also adopting more of a flipped classroom. So, they're giving the traditional hallmark assignments. Here's your notes. Here's your new vocab. Here's an example of how I do things. And then in the classroom, they're actually working with that knowledge. So, that's where I'm seeing our transition going as well, is providing that strong foundation in a traditional style. You know, as a resource for these kids to work very, very well traditionally. And then incorporating the phenomenon-based, hands-on, student-centered, problem-based learning.
I could repeat this for hours.
No, I just see it as-
I really could.
It's interesting. I know, we're like drilling down on it, but it was interesting. Okay.
To the other side of the table. Yeah, no, I, so, you were asking me in your survey whether the people you work with feel supported. I'll ask the same thing of you. Do you feel supported? Do you feel like you have what you need? And/or are there any barriers in your way to accomplishing your goals?
Budget?
Yeah. No, good. That's, that's what we wanna hear.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. The administration has been super welcoming and very accommodating to any questions I have. I'm learning the ropes, you know, about what certain expectations are. Being in the classroom, being in higher ed for so long, I can be a little headstrong about things, and I, you know, do have to step back and see how it affects everybody in the district now, instead of just my hundred kids in my classroom. But, yeah, it's, I do feel very supported. I, I would like to-
Supported, but need more money.
Any money would be good.
Fair enough.
Yeah, we're trying to put forth robotics, too, and that's gonna be an expensive class, if that's the case, because we need these robotics kits for competition. It's competition-grade. So, I haven't talked to Dr. Daly yet.
No. I asked a question, I can give you the answer. It's great.
That was actually sort of one of my questions, too, so, just about how your transition has been from being in the classroom to now being in administration. You answered it well, though.
Well, I have two different areas I wanted to ask about. So, the first was just, since my oldest is only in ninth grade. So, I'm just curious, like, what, like, what classes do students have to take? Like, how many are taking AP or getting to that level? Like, do you see a drop-off? Like, do kids have to take math all the way through twelfth grade? Do they have to take science all the way through? Are there additional options on top of, you mentioned robotics, too? Are there other classes that, like, we need to think about adding in that we don't have right now?
There's always room to add classes, and we just, the faculty with the teaching three gets a little tough when there's a lot of singletons, schedule-wise. We have a number of options for students in science. The engineering courses count as a science. The CAD classes count as science. We just got approved to do, or, I think, robotics. We're gonna be able to count as a science, and that'll be two classes, hopefully, for the kids who have taken it the last two years. The math courses, we're a little low on. We do still require four years of those, as well as science. We have the more traditional Algebra and Geometry, Algebra II, Precalculus. We have Calculus, Honors Calculus, AP, two different levels of AP Calculus. We just introduced last year Advanced Algebra and Financial Applications. And, oh, and we put SIMBAC in the curriculum, Senior Integrated Math. So, there are some choices in math, but not, not as many. But we're, there's not as many faculty in the math department as there is in the science department, so that-
Is AP Statistics still there?
AP, yes, thank you. AP Stats is still there.
And then-
And our courses haven't, we haven't declined in our APs, meaning enrollment has actually been going up.
And, oh, and I have a note here, like, I love the idea of peer-to-peer shadowing, by the way. I think that's a great thing. The, my other questions are more, a little more not only about math and science, but about the position, because the NRPS 2025 had in it this position. There's other positions like this that are in there as well. And so, last year, this came up as something we were debating when we were looking at the value of this position versus other positions that we had. And that was a big discussion that we had on the committee last year about prioritizing this position over other existing positions, over other cuts. So, just a few questions on that. Like, the first question I have is, you were a colleague of people that you're now supervising. So, in some ways, I feel like maybe that made it an easier transition, and in other ways, it might have been more difficult. But like, if we're gonna add this sort of position to, you know, in other areas, do you think it's good to have somebody that was a colleague kind of step up to this position? Or do you think there's some advantages both ways? I'm just curious of your, your thought there.
My situation, my colleagues all knew my background. So, when I came in here, I already had been an administrator. I already teach in the graduate school, so they knew that. And they would always come to me for advice or, you know, clarification on techniques or things like that. So, we already had a really good relationship like that. I think the piece that they like is I'm giving them honest feedback about what I see because I know their content. And so, I think that bringing somebody from the classroom to the administrative level was a good choice because they know the content. They know inside and out what's going on. And you don't just go in to observe pedagogy anymore or teaching methodologies anymore. You actually go in and see how well-versed they are in the content as well. So, that has been commented to me how much they appreciate getting that type of feedback now. Not just about their teaching, but their style of teaching, but actually how they're teaching that content. So, I do think that it was good in this situation. I wouldn't want to speak for any other situation, as long as the person that or people that you would want to go into another position from a classroom teacher to an administrator had that understanding and experience to make it work. The relationships are probably the hardest.
Two related questions. The first is with, again, this is a small sample size, but do you see yourself more as having younger teachers looking to your position or more established positions? Because I could see both. I could see established positions that maybe need an update on curriculum and need help with changing what they've taught for fifteen years. I can also see younger teachers that are still trying to learn their own style. So, I'm just curious what you see, like, who's coming to you?
I'm gonna piggyback on this a tiny bit in terms of, like, you're talking about, you know, content. And I would, I'm also interested in the same question in terms of their receptiveness to your role. Like, the younger versus the teachers that have been here longer than anybody.
I have, I haven't, actually, I started in 2000, so I think I might be one of the- But the, the, more veteran teachers are definitely looking to change things in their classroom. They, they have described that they're feeling stagnant. What, what else can I do? I'm introducing this for the fifteenth year. What, how can I make it now? And so, it's really great conversations like that for us. The newer teachers, I'm definitely more of a mentor or a coach right now, and they're sucking it up. You know, even, even just going through the UBD lesson planning and unit planning, they're like, oh, oh, you know, like, they feel so powerful now because they understand everything that and where it's supposed to go. So, they're feeling more confident in their own teaching strategy or technique or style. So, it's, they definitely have different needs.
And let's pretend that I completely listened to Dr. Daly last year about this position and what it's replacing, but let's pretend that I, I knew and I didn't listen to that. But who was doing what you were doing before? Like, where were people getting that from before? Like, for example, even just the oversight, you're, you're observing, I think you said fourteen-
Fifteen.
Fifteen different teachers. Who were the people that were doing that last year? It's like, this position didn't exist. Was it all Dr. Daly doing it? Was it Mr. Colleen, like?
Most of us had the, one of the principals or assistant principals.
Okay. So, now they have somebody in their subject matter doing their observations as opposed to a, an administrator that may or may not have had that background? And, okay, and then, and then the curriculum leadership model before teachers were doing some of this other stuff or nobody was doing this, like, taking curriculum and helping build curriculum? Or this, was that just like responsibility of the individual teachers or department heads?
Where, if and when we needed to adjust curriculum in the past, it was definitely the responsibility of the curriculum leader to make sure that was done, and we would talk about it as a department and try to see what needed to be adjusted. So, the curriculum leader was actually facilitating that. But it didn't fall all on his or her shoulders because we did it together.
Would that become, would that be more of a project-based because of a need or change versus an ongoing exploration that is more likely to happen in this case?
Sure, absolutely.
And are curriculum leads, are they, have you replaced them or do you still have?
We still have them.
Okay.
Okay.
I was just gonna highlight one-
You have a lot of questions.
My colleagues, my colleagues have asked a lot of great questions and better than I could. I did wanna highlight one thing that I was happy to hear, which was the use of iReady in ninth grade. One of the things that I hear, and, or, one of the things I don't really hear, and I ask about it occasionally, is, you know, that handoff between schools of students. And, and I don't know if, how much this will help, but having that consistent assessment tool from the middle school into the ninth grade seems to me that would facilitate that. I, I know that you go into the beginning of ninth grade and they're, everyone's doing assessments beginning of the year anyway, but to have it tied back, hopefully, it'll tie back to what they're, where they were at the end of eighth grade as well, so.
And we can follow each individual student all the way from elementary school now. So, it's, it's really under the same-
If it's the right tool, then it's great that it's the same tool, right?
Dr. Daly, you wanted to jump in?
Just, just a few things. One thing to point out, too, that Michelle, in the last year or maybe two, was the data leader at the high school also. And so, a lot of these connections we've seen with data, and a lot of what you've seen in our school improvement plan data, and a lot of those improvements Michelle's been working on, first as a teacher leader, and now that's carried over. We, when, when Mr. Colleen and I went into our annual MCAS data reviews, and then Michelle was there, too. It was just a really different experience this year, she being both at middle school and high school, which was, which was great. To answer the other question, too, it's a little bit, from where I'm sitting, it's a little difficult sometimes for her to answer it, but I'm sitting here saying, this is happening at science and math, and it's not happening in other departments. So, the answer to the question Scott asked is, those things were happening. We're still asking that. We still have to turn around that work. It's the level to which it's getting done- It's the level to which it's getting done, the quality of it and the support the teachers are getting to deliver a high quality. That's why that position's needed. And I'm just sitting here saying, we need to, we need to fight for this in other subject areas as well, starting with like humanities at least to have our four core subjects done because everyone needs that support. Our curriculum leaders are doing the best they can, being full-time teachers and in classrooms, but having that other layer with the flexibility of her role to be able to push into rooms. And she's really done a great job of, of being visible, being accessible. I mean, the fact that you're actually surveying them and getting data to prove it is even better. I really appreciate that. But I can say from what I've heard from people anecdotally in the hallways, just coming up and saying, this has been a blessing, like having that support, even from some parents that have benefited from Michelle not co-teaching, but maybe pushing into a room to support a new teacher or to support, um, different classes. It's been really well received so far. And we're only a couple of months in. And like I said to start, I, it's like, how do we do it? How do we ever do this? There was such a void because it, it, it's not getting done in the same way when it's a principal trying to do it because the principal's being called away. When it's Mr. Colleen trying to do it, and I did this for years, trying to do every subject K to twelve, you can't. You can't do it to the level we need. That's why we created a digital learning position to take that on. And that's why we have a STEM and hopefully we can continue to build, you know, a few more. We don't need to be top-heavy, but we need a few more positions to really get that, um, that level of administrative support. So thank you for that.
Okay.
My, my final comment is just to agree with Dr. Daly. Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
We thought we were going to have a quick one. Is that I don't know how we didn't, like, seeing what you're doing now, it's like, how did we function before? And super like excited and grateful that we were able to fund this position. And also if, in the, in the future, if there was to be a humanities position, I can't imagine it ever being anyone but a classroom teacher because I think that's like where so much of the value is coming from. And my final question, Mar, my final comment was you about six weeks ago had sent our communication, kind of introducing yourself to families. I got so much positive feedback from that because I don't think everyone necessarily always pays attention. People, like, that was, people are so excited to see, like, the focus on STEM and that, that we're taking it seriously as a district. So that was, that was good to see.
Thanks, thanks for that feedback.
See, we're a horrible group to come to present to, but I will say, we have questions from all sorts of different, I, um, I don't know, backgrounds, so.
Yep, for sure.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, very much.
Wonderful. Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Okay.
You too.
International travel update, I think we'll go back to. And Dr. Daly, you want to lead this and we'll do a vote here?
So a few, uh, weeks ago, we had a presentation on the trip for international travel to Peru. There's been some, few different changes, uh, to that. And they are now proposing a trip to.
Greece instead of.
Here somewhere.
Country to go to right now.
With Greece instead of Peru.
Greece instead of Peru.
And it was primarily because of low enrollment, that, and because of everything that's going on or not?
No. No, it's due to a few different changes at the, at EF that they think that this is a better trip, um, for many different factors. There's been some political, um, activities in Peru that we've been monitoring. That was part of why we didn't go, uh, the first time. There's been some different cost changes. There's been, there's just been some different ideas where, you know, Peru just isn't the best option right now. And so they've identified this trip for, um, for Greece. And I know that we have cost, uh, questions about, um, whether, you know, the cost would be the same or lower for students. And I know that there's some questions about, um, you know, the question about if a student didn't want to go to Greece or a student who currently may have been on board for Peru. And so they would have, uh, three different options. One would be to receive a voucher for all money paid, um, to be used on a future trip with EF. They could also receive a refund for all money paid less the insurance, uh, in the deposit. And then they could also do a cancel with replacement, which, um, we would facilitate the transfer. You can actually transfer the trip to another student, um, so that, that the canceled student will lose any money. And since that is an option, uh, there's probably no situation where a student would, would lose money given those different variables, you know? So very often if a student is a underclass, they may keep the voucher for future. But if they're a senior and they don't want to go to Greece, um, and I don't get the sense, they usually make these decisions, uh, with student consultations, so I'm sure that there's a lot of buy-in to the new trip. And it looks great. Not only are they going to Athens, but there's also going to Alexander the Great's, uh, birthplace and, and traveling, which is, which is awesome.
And the thing that you sent us had it with a ten-day trip, but then the, there was a four-day add-on?
Yeah, I don't think that's happening. I think it's just following the same timelines and parameters that they.
It's just a ten-day.
And before, yeah.
And in terms of the Peru, was that, is this longer than the Peru trip was? Or is it the same?
I think, I think those dynamics are, are similar.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds the same.
Okay. Um, any questions? So do you want the motion to specifically reflect that this is a change? Do you want a motion to take away the approval of Peru? Or do you want to just do in one, one motion just to say that?
Just replace.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we make one motion on, on?
I'll just, I'll just add this piece to say, this, this new itinerary is the same length of time, same experiential themes, helps us hit the program goals. It has lower costs and it also will allow them to bring ten additional students. There's bigger buses, um, in Europe. So they're able to do all those things. So yeah, I motion to just approve the updated trip to Greece that they can then have EF advertise.
So I will, I'll move that, the committee vote to, uh, approve the, um, change in the international trip for, this is the twenty twenty-five trip, right? For April of twenty twenty-five to the, from Peru to the Greece trip.
We have a motion by Rich, a second by Jeff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, by zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Do you want me to do the student report quickly?
Oh, yeah. Do the student report, go ahead.
So Cassandra was, uh, ill at the last, uh, moment today, but we did meet today as a group to be able to communicate. There's, uh, some brief updates here. They wanted to share that the notable academic matters, that, um, all the seniors now have their class rank. They know the, you know, the, the percentage where they are. The notable fine arts matters, they wanted to talk about the SpongeBob musical, which is December second, third, eighth and ninth, which Mr. Buckley mentioned earlier. There are still some tickets available, but we should act quickly. They are, um, they are selling quickly. Notable athletic, athletic matters, the winter sports are starting today and the fall sports are, um, are complete for the most part. There are some other options. There is the polar pledge that we've talked about. This is, um, goes towards, uh, Special Olympics and unified sports. And the, there's a snowball, a winter formal on December fifteenth. And they wanted to talk a little bit about the pep rally from last week. It was, uh, a phenomenal event, I thought. When I sat there and I thought about my pep rallies when I was in school, there was mostly athletics, mostly football, right? And it was, um, kids sitting in the stands with captains speaking. This is an event that incorporated the whole school. You've got competition, friendly competitions among grade levels. There was a whole, um, theme about the unified sports. They had a guest speaker from, um, a movie that was out a couple of years ago about a, a basketball team with Special Olympics. Then they did a, an activity with our unified team, brought them out. They were shooting, like, you know, three-pointers, layups, half-court shots for different points. Even the, the local movie star that was in this, uh, movie that came to speak participated. It was just a great, uh, event and activity. It was really, really fun. And I, I have to say, for Mr. LaPratt, Mr. Hudson, all those folks that organized that event, um, student council and, and all the students that worked on that, it was really a great unifying event and we love to come down in central office just to participate. And everyone's wearing their green and gold and it really is a, it's a whole school holiday tradition. It's not just about football or even fall sports, which, you know, I used to feel in high school, it's like, well, you know, we only, we don't do this for the winter sports or the spring, you know, so to have that sort of just fall celebration was really great, so I wanted to.
Does it fall during school hours or is it?
It does, yeah. It's sort of the, um, last hour or so before dismissal on Wednesday, yeah.
Same when I was in high school.
Yeah, yeah, it works, um.
But it was all about football then.
Yeah, it, it really, it really was a special day and everyone was excited about, um, you know, we celebrated, you know, Notorious is out there performing and, and, you know, the band, like, there's, it's just very inclusive. It was, it was excellent, so.
So just two, two quick questions on the, on that. Number one.
Yeah.
At, at some point, can we get some numbers on the participation in the sports, fall, winter, whatever? I'd just like to see what percentage of students are joining clubs that are doing sports or whatever. I mean, it's been a long time since I saw that and so I, I'm just curious about that.
We've talked about it, uh, coming out of athletic, because he, he does share that, or at least anecdotally, and maybe we can get some more firm numbers, but.
I, I'd be curious. I mean, like, we're setting fees for these activities and everything. Like, I just, I would like to see the numbers someday on like what, what they are. And then, and this, this is something in the future, but we should talk about the student role again. We had, we had kind of tabled that because of this year, but I don't know, I mean, we're about halfway, we're, we're, we're getting into the year.
Student rep role, you mean?
Yeah, the student rep role and like, I'd just be curious to have a conversation in the future again about this, whether it's just you, you and I, Patrick, or
Yeah.
here about like what that role is. Cause we've talked about how it might need to change and how different districts do it differently and what the regulations are. And I don't know if you've had any conversations with the student reps about the role, but we don't have to do it tonight, but I just want to make sure we.
Sure.
Don't forget that, so.
Yeah, I will say, you know, I think, I've philosophically, I think the students are even in agreement with having not what we do, which is a rotating report on high school activities and more of a non-voting member who's here every night. I think some districts do that. That is technically what the regulations say. I think it's, there's many things that we can't necessarily do that are in regulation sometimes. I think the time commitment is, is very much a challenge for kids. And to say that, you know, we're even trying to see like who's interested in doing the current role and it's hard getting people to, to come out here and do that. And I do think, something we can continue to talk about. I think there's a huge, you know, a huge value to having that voice on a committee, like you see at the state level, where you have that student input on how certain things impact. So we can continue to discuss that.
I guess my request would be that the current student reps have a discussion about that, about what they want it to be too.
Yeah.
Because I think we would all welcome the voice and understand it is a commitment, but I think that it would be great. And so, but I, I think, I think, starting from what they would like and them having maybe a proposal on it because it's, it's something we, we need to make sure we're compliant with regulations, but also, you know, giving them the voice, giving them the opportunity to be here and be heard and us benefiting from that.
And as far as the time commitment is concerned, maybe we, we can probably think a little bit out the, outside the box and think about just targeted attendance at certain.
Yeah.
We can shuffle around the agenda, you know, do they need to be here for the budget update necessarily? All due respect to Mr. Connolly, but. But yeah, so I think it'd be great to, you know, because there may be topics that they wish they could.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know the, I know the Board of Elementary Second Education meets ten o'clock on a Tuesday, right? So I mean, if our meetings were during the student day, you might be able to get more participation. And I don't know what they do in other districts that have more participation, but I think it's the night commitments when they're doing SpongeBob and soccer and baseball. But if we did from ten to eleven, then they could free themselves up once in a while. So things to think about.
Yeah, I get, just, just, just here it is. I just, I just don't want to drop that and you know, want to make sure that we are in compliance. And again, if we have to have a meeting here or there, just to having a meeting once a month, once every other month or whatever.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, okay. Let's, no, no minutes at the time, budget update. Mr. Connolly.
Yes.
You're on here for like four things that you can pick and choose what you want to do first.
Yep, I'll just talk about the general fund operating budget update, which was, was linked in the packet. So not, not a lot of new drivers, um, where this reflects activity through the middle of November. We are, you know, things are still trending within budget. Uh, we have had, as typically is the case, some expenses come up on the, on the maintenance side of things and on the special education side of things that we're monitoring, that we've been able to address all within the budgeted lines. We have, which we have typically done, set ourselves up to have some extra level of flexibility by prepaying the tuitions and doing, um, things at the end of the year that we're able to do, um, on the maintenance side. So we are, we are in good, good financial standing. Payroll accounts are certainly, uh, all within, within budgeted amounts. As we know, we're continuing to, to, um, negotiate with par professionals, so we're just monitoring any, any of those potential impacts, um, that remain unknown. But the, um, food service program is performing well. Participation is really high, um, well over seventy percent.
What was it last year?
Um, we're, it was about seventy percent.
Okay, I thought it was even lower last year.
So we are, I would say we're, on average, we're about seventy to seventy-two percent. But at the middle school in particular, we're, we're really doing, um, a lot of mails every day. The middle school is, is most significantly up from the other schools.
We get two every day.
Even the à la carte options are up and the second, second mail, mail equivalents are, are, are really high, so.
What's, what's offered for breakfast again? I mean, I, I know they're.
So there.
They roll that out more this year.
There is a grab-and-go breakfast style breakfast cart that is housed in the high school and the middle school.
And that's for anybody or just, just the?
It is for anyone. It's obviously the, the, the students at, and then, at the elementary schools that are in the before-school program. On the elementary schools, it's particularly for the before-school program.
Right.
Because they don't quite, we haven't quite figured out the scheduling time of students kind of rolling in regular time to get them to kind of come in and have access. And the regulations have changed that they do have to go through sort of the point-of-sale line. We do need to register them, register it as a male. During COVID, it was a little more loose where we could sort of just go off rough counts and have them kind of grab and go and, and see what was there, but they have to go through the point-of-sale. So at the elementary schools, it's before-school program breakfast. Middle school and high school, it's open to everyone. Obviously, I think bus riders that kind of have access are coming around eight-ten. They, and students that are here coming around eight-ten, they have that fifteen minutes before they go into the homeroom where the, the breakfast cart is there and available, um, on both sides, middle school and high school.
Do you know what percentage are doing it?
It's lower. I, it's about thirty percent. It's about a half, so, yeah.
That's lower than I thought. Okay, thank you.
But other, other payroll, um, and salaries information is all kind of within, within budget. So I think we're in good financial standing. I think we're in a good position to deal with some, some unanticipated costs, which we know will arise, um, as we move through the fiscal year. But with that being said, I'll just open up to any questions, any other questions?
I had none, just, just the school lunches. Oh, the comment, I emailed you, but I'll say it publicly. I mean, I think I, my daughter who did not like school lunches last year pointed out how much.
Oh, yes, I appreciate that.
How much she really has enjoyed it this year. She was like, oh, the lunch lady's got a new boss and the lunches are great.
My gosh, my daughter brought a recipe card home. I guess they were like giving out, they, like pumpkin bars?
Yes.
Arden being home and made the recipe, but it was like written like, so I have a, I had a sheet pan of pumpkin.
Yes.
So I was like giving them to the neighbors. I'm like, this is a cafeteria-sized recipe.
So that's part of the.
We couldn't fill the pumpkin bars, but she was very impressed.
That program is happening across all the schools. It's called Discovery Kitchen. And Laura Bantel, the, um, nutritionist is kind of spearheading that initiative. It started last year. So that, that's happening. And they did do the pumpkin bars at the middle school and high school.
Yep, and at our house.
Yes, so that's great. And I did see them.
Yeah, I mean, at the elementary, like, cause my, my boys both, when they got to middle school, loved the, the options for lunches and my daughter was just saying how many new options there were in the elementary and she really.
It's just great to see kids interacting with a nutrition program.
Yes.
Like historically, it's like, oh, school lunch. And now to have kids talking about it, trying, trying new foods, like they do the watermelon feta mint salad that came out, like, buying new things.
I think that was part of the Discovery Kitchen.
That's really, um, that's great. I mean, the fact that we can provide that to kids that maybe aren't, you know,
Pardon me?
Adventurous eaters, maybe.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, that's, that's great feedback. I was really.
It was.
Pleased to hear that because the new food service director, Kate Philto, is trying to, tried to come in and give everything kind of a fresh look. And apply some of the popular items at Discovery Kitchen and student choice programs to, and put that on the menu. So that's great. That's great to hear.
Great.
Excellent.
Student activity?
Yeah, so this, as is typical, quarterly, we present the student activity report. So this reflects activity through the end of quarter one, which is. Um, so this reflects activity through the end of quarter one, which is September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, so everything, as you can see, what's included in the report is the reconciled account balances for all the, all the schools. And then there's a listing of the sub-account, sub-accounts that exist for the middle school and the high school. Um, usually at the first meeting that we present this report, I think I got all the information just, um, it was a little too late in October, on the October or November thirteenth meeting. But we do ask that the school committee do just take a kind of formal vote of recognition of the active high school and middle school clubs that are presented here. Uh, and that's part of our policy, um, as well. So there's just, there's an annual vote that is required. That's something we weren't doing. It was an audit finding five or six years ago. And we've been trying to do that. Uh, so there is, there is a, a recommended action, um, once we're done with the discussion. Um, but I think, I think the balances are in, in good standing and, um, everything's kind of seems to be going, going well.
I, I didn't have any questions. Any questions on it?
Oh.
Can somebody read the motion?
Sure. I moved that the school committee vote to approve the list of active student activity accounts at the high school and middle school for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year as presented by the administration.
Second?
We have a motion by Rich, a second by Noel. Rich?
Aye.
Oh, wait. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Sorry.
We're good.
And-
Like, it's not like it's wrong.
The booster, yeah. Booster support group recognition. I'm guessing this is the one that needs the vote, not the enrollment.
Correct. Um, yes, correct. I, um-
No, no, I'm just, I'm like, I don't think we need to accept the enrollment update, do we?
No. Um, so we have another kind of booster support group that have kind of come, come forward and they've sort of done everything they've needed to do to, um, be established as a, as a booster support group. Their, their application for recognition is included. This is consistent with our, with our policy. They've gone about and created their bylaws. They've created their offices. They have their own, um, federal tax FEI, FEIN number that they've listed. They, they've gone and filed for a public charity number. They have their own bank account. And they have a president and treasurer. So they've, they've certainly, um, crossed the Ts, dotted the Is with everything that we've asked for in this, part of this policy. Uh, they've included their bylaws. So I included a copy of their whole packet, um, in the, in the, their whole submission to me with, in the packet. Um, but I think they've certainly done everything they've, they've needed to do. Their, their mission that they've provided is listed here. They certainly want to support the boys' high school soccer boosters program, you know, help provide some support for their year-end awards banquet. Um, recognition of, of their senior nights' celebration annually and help offset other events and expenses. Um, so I think it's certainly within line of what, what we would want them to support. And I, I ask that we formally recognize them this evening.
Wonderful. I want to just thank them all for doing that. I mean, it's great that community members want to support the teams and wholeheartedly support it. Any comments, questions on it?
I have one, um, just, do we feel like this process, which has been in place for what, six, seven years, seven or eight years now?
Yeah.
Um, do we feel like it's-
Won that, but yeah.
That, that there's a balance, right, between limiting-
Correct.
Uh, and, and making sure that things are done right, but also lim, you know, limiting support. Do we feel like it strikes a good balance or are-
Yeah, it's a good question.
People who are committed, able to get through the process fairly oka- okay?
Yeah, it's a good question. And when I, when, when parents do reach out and say they want to take these steps, that's sort of the word I kind of use with them. I say, look, we're just trying to find a, a balance between, we're not here to kind of, um, micromanage what you do or have level of oversight of everything you do. You're a separate organization with your own separate board and bylaws and, and, and financial information, records that you need to keep and file to stay active. What we, we're here to just say is if you want to kind of interact and collaborate with our student programs, our extracurriculars, whether it be fine arts or athletic or extracurricular in nature, we just want to make sure it's consistent with your mission and we're not here to kind of micromanage or oversee you. And I think they understand that. And I think we want to just make sure there's a checks and balance. It's not kind of a, a, a single operation. Um, there's segregation of duties there that exists and they've gone through those steps. Um, so to me, I said, like, kind of once this happens and we have the information, you know, we're not looking to kind of oversee them or have this oversight for years to come. We, we do ask if there's changes that you inform us. If anything drastically changes mission bylaws, we're informed. And then we do ask them annually that they just let us know of major fundraising events that they plan to do and what, what that is and when, and when. And they all give me a, a list of that. Um, in September of each, each year. But other, other than that, I think, I think that strikes the right balance. Um, so I do think it's been working.
Great.
Make the motion?
Sure. I, um, I move that the, in adherence to school committee policy, LEC, the North Reading School Committee vote to recognize the above organization as a support group and authorize school administration to work collaboratively, collaboratively with, for the betterment of the North Reading Public Schools, referencing the, um, North Reading Boys High School Soccer Boosters.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was a lot.
Second?
We have a motion by Rich, a second by Noel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Enrollment update?
Yeah. So I, what I really wanted to do this evening is just kind of call attention to the fact that the October first enrollment, um, has been officially certified. That happened kind of at the end, beginning of, um, November, end of October. Um, so that really allowed, um, us to kind of go forward and see, see what changes, um, were in place and kind of update the five and ten-year enrollment projections. I don't have really a detailed presentation, but I did include the link in the information of that report, which is part of our annual budget process when we review it in greater detail. Is, has been posted in, um, on this, on the website. Um, but certainly enrollment, um, I think was in the consistent variance of what we expected. Um, and we're going to see, you know, I think with the, it has been greater in migration and greater, you know, higher level of kind of kindergarten students than I think we anticipated certainly this year. Um, so we're kind of watching those trends and see if, if our progression ratios need to change and what else is happening within the, within the, um, community and, and what's in the developments and what's, what's occurring. But, um, I think the, the ratios of what, how we analyze this data, right, over fi- three, five and 10 years, I still think are the greatest, um, projection of what's going to happen in the future. Um, but we are, we are seeing that the ele- elementary will be trending kind of upwards. The middle school kind, will have a little bit of a dip and then kind of have a moderate increase. In the high school, um, after kind of years of sort of a moderate decline, we'll start to, we'll start to have a, an increase is what we're seeing.
And I, I just had two questions. They were both related to kindergarten. The first one is, and we can somewhat kick these to budget, but, um, number one, if we are able to get rid of the full day, the fee for full day kindergarten and everybody becomes a full day student, I assume we, we wouldn't be offering half day anymore. Everybody would be in full day. What would, just thinking in the future, like, what's the impact of that on the budget? You know, is it just like a half a teacher position and a, and a couple pair of professional going to full time? I mean, just, just thinking about that because if we are going to push for that for June as part of an override, I think it's important to make sure that we're putting that in the budget. And, and I was just looking at your class size. I think we almost need to have two different ones if we have that. And related to that was just, if we didn't, you were, I think you were proposing twenty-two and twenty-three in kindergarten classes for, I think it was at the little school.
Yeah.
That's the only thing that I, during budget update, I will push back on a little bit. I think twenty-three kids in a-
No.
In a kindergarten is a lot. So.
The hard, the, so I think the biggest variable is the kindergarten situation, certainly with enrollment. It always is. And I think the idea of going to hopefully free universal full day kindergarten could certainly, it's, it's on, it's difficult to predict the, the direct-
Right.
Until February.
Yeah.
Um, but I think we would see an increase and we would need staffing, additional staffing.
Just, just something to keep in mind. That's the only thing that I noticed that looked where if we're, when we're planning in a couple of months, I think we have to think about that because if an override were to pass and we were to be able to eliminate the fee for kindergarten, there won't be those half day classes anymore. And we have to make sure we can staff up for that.
Yes.
And of course, the challenge will be that it, we'll know it in June and then you'll have to find positions in June, but it is what it is. Maybe else have any questions on the enrollment update?
Just, and my, just, and this is, has nothing to do with anything, just my own observation. Um, I did, I chose go find kids to be half day kindergarten and I would be sad not to have that choice.
Yeah.
I don't, I think I'm probably a pretty small minority, but there are still some people that-
That would feel that way. Yeah. I can understand that.
Yeah.
I just think, yeah, but I think the, if we didn't have a fee, I don't, I think it would be, everybody would be in full day. I don't think we would offer half day, right?
Yeah. Probably. I mean, that would be-
There's different, I mean, we could have that hybrid kind of idea. Just the idea of a standalone half day is what you wouldn't have.
Yeah. No, and I think it's just, it's, it's the way of the world, but it's just one of those things. I think there will be a few people that say-
What do you think? I mean, the only, the only challenge on the hybrid, and, and I don't know that I've agreed with this, but the challenge people had before was when you do it as a hybrid.
Yeah, the hybrid is not ideal.
Everything has, everything has to be pushed into the morning and it can't be spread out across the whole day. So that was, with the first year the hybrid was introduced, that was a big challenge. I wasn't on the school committee, but I was in that meeting. It was kind of a little heated. And that was- That was the big push.
I had a hybrid student. It was, it was a challenge. Yeah.
I had a hybrid student.
But she was, she went home and she was like, why?
That's probably why he's not going to be valedictorian, because, because of the hybrid kindergarten. Just kidding. Okay.
Sorry. We don't have those here anyway.
Thank, thank you. A two percenter or whatever, three, three percenter. Um, thank you, Mr. Connolly, for all this. And we say it probably not enough, but we really do appreciate the, the level of detail that you have. And, you know, it, it's nice to be able to completely have faith in the budget in North Reading. And that's pretty much only, solely because of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you.
Um, yeah, and we, and we don't need a vote on the enrollment.
Correct. Yeah, that's correct.
Just clarifying. Staffing, no update?
None at this time.
Bids and donations?
We have one here. Uh, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one thousand dollars from Rita Radzakowski uh, to the high school marching band.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Rich and a second by Jeff. All those in favor? Aye opposed? Unanimous. Grants, we have two grants. We haven't accepted these, right? At least we need to accept these.
We have not. No. So these, the first is the hate crimes prevention grant at fifty thousand dollars. The second is the MyCap college and career preparation grant at five thousand five hundred dollars.
Was there, okay. Yeah.
They're just-
No, I have it here. Yeah. Okay. So, uh, I move that the committee vote to accept the hate crimes prevention grant of fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, second. Sorry.
We have a motion by Rich and I think a second by Jeff.
Did I second last time?
All those in favor?
No, you didn't. You got shut out.
Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
And I move that the committee vote to, uh, accept the MyCap college and career preparation grant of five thousand five hundred dollars. Second.
You should just mess with Cindy.
I know. I didn't mean to do that. I should have kept my mouth shut. Sorry.
We have a motion by Rich, a second by Jeff. All those in favor? Aye opposed? Unanimous.
So the first one is a continuation of the work we've been doing, um, using the, the task force guidelines for how we respond to incidents of bias to hate crimes. We're going to be able to partner with, um, Northeastern Center this year and to not only do staff and student training, but also something, uh, community training based as well. So we're very excited about that. And then the MyCap is really about college and career planning. Um, there's some different options and some different tools and resources available. And our, all the research says to start those conversations even earlier. So we're going to be looking at middle school and the possibility of having some conversations with students in sixth, seventh, eighth grade about possible careers and choices that they may want to engage with.
And who will lead these efforts in both of these cases?
So the MyCap, I've charged, um, Mike Rosa, who is our coordinator of school counseling. He's going to work with middle school counselors as well as some high school representatives. And the idea with that is that it builds after year one to go into year two, where then we would look at high school. Um, but really this year is about exploring the tools and resources, making sure this is the direction we want to go. We already have programs in place, but we're, uh, able to explore that. The hate crimes prevention, um, that work, Mr. Clean is really doing a good amount of that along with myself and our principals, um, to sort of put these in place. And we have many teachers, but we're also getting the voice of our student social activism club and other groups to be, uh, working there as well. And so we also have an upcoming, uh, in a related effort, we're, we were accepted into the project three fifty-one program and we have a training this Saturday. Um, it's sort of, it's called the Celtics playbook. We're actually going to the Celtics practice facilities in Waltham. So we're really excited about that. Um, and that training is where high school students will be trained to then come back and work with middle school students. So that was really something we've been working on, but also what we heard when we did our trainings last spring, that the high school students all said, this really needs to begin in middle school with kids having conversations. So, um, that, uh, we're really looking forward to on, on, uh, Saturday. And I'll be going, Dr. O'Connell will be there, Mr. Clean and, uh, two of our student representatives from the, um, from the social activism club who've spoken here before. Aiden Patel is the president and then here is Noel. So, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Patel, there you go.
Okay.
I think I'm losing my voice as I'm talking.
Subcommittee updates. Looks like there was no subcommittee meeting.
None at this time.
Finance planning meeting is on December eighth at eight fifteen AM in person. Um, athletic subcommittee, January sixteen, sixteenth at noon. Fine arts subcommittee after that at three fifteen. No administrative report or correspondence at this time.
We've got CIPC tomorrow morning.
Yeah, CIPC tomorrow. And future business, actually, on the CIPC, the only thing we should think about is if we do what we're, what we're talking about in terms of budget, maybe some of the things that would be the requests we could get into the operational budget, maybe on the time side as well. Maybe there'll be more. And, and even some of the funding might free up more money to actually do some of the capital projects. So it might be worth trying to get people there on board with the idea as well. So.
Talking up, David. Talking up.
Um, future business, December eleventh, we have a meeting at six thirty. January eighth, we have a meeting at six thirty. And January twenty-second, we have a meeting at six thirty. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Motion by Jeff, second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone.